For those watching on the, with the agenda, we're gonna go out of order. We're just gonna complete three items on the Public Works and then we'll go back to the Finance Committee. Let's take a real call.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Tolemy?
Here.
Alderman Suback?
Here.
Alderman Shaki? Alderman Pizik? Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Kneipe?
Here.
Cornbrine present. I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 11, 2006. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is item number four. It's the 2006 roadway program. This is the sidewalk survey. As part of the roadway projects this year, we are reconstructing Iroquois Drive from Montrose to the end, and also reconstructing Montclair from Montrose down to Juniper. It's been the city's policy to install sidewalks when we do a street reconstruction progress for a project. We met with the residents to go over the plans, and Joe and I, and we went through basically from house to house with the residents, looking at the plans. Some of the residents were excited about the sidewalks, but as always, some residents were not so excited about the sidewalks. Although we were not required to, we told the residents that we would bring it back to the committee for a recommendation on these sidewalks. In order to provide as much information to everybody, we did a survey through city services, and the results are attached to your memorandum. The streets were originally designed by Gary to be 25 feet wide, curb to curb, through a recommendation of Pat Gabor, one of the residents and a former city council member. She suggested to narrow those streets down to 22 feet, especially because the Iroquois Trail was a dead end in Montclair, past the S curve, south of the S curve. It was also, we only have one set of houses. We brought that recommendation back and we awarded the bids, and we agreed to redesign those streets to be 22 feet wide, curb to curb. If you look at your packet, the Iroquois Trail, the surveys came back, where actually the majority of the residents wanted the sidewalks to be installed, as far as north Montclair. Again, the majority of the residents there wanted the sidewalks to be installed, as far as the residents north of Montclair. The buses for the District 7 do pick the kids up at the corner of Montclair and Central, or Montclair and Montrose. There's an existing sidewalk across the street, but there's nothing where the kids can walk up Montclair to get to their bus stop. Now, when we get down south Montclair, the position starts to change. The majority of the residents on south Montclair did not want to have the sidewalks installed. My position has always been that we should install the sidewalks. It's the policy of the city, and we should stick to the city. Whenever we deviate from the policy, you start kinda getting mishmashed, as far as where you have and where you don't. I also urge the committee to look long-term. If you think sidewalks are good long-term for Wooddale, they should certainly be installed. We walked the project I did with Gary yesterday, and we went through. As far as the Iroquois Trail, there is a very, actually, there's no tree loss on Iroquois Trail as a result of the installation of sidewalks. There are, there will be about five evergreens that are marginal quality that need to be removed on Iroquois, but again, that's because of the overall project. North Montclair, north of Murray, there will be no tree loss as a result of the sidewalks. South Montclair, we have about three trees that will be lost as a result of just the sidewalks. There are other tree loss along south Montclair, but that's more because of the storm sewer installation. One of the houses that has the loss of two trees because of the sidewalks is property at 261 South Montclair. I actually spoke to the, not the owners of the property, but their son, who I advised that we could probably have the sidewalk go around those trees in order to eliminate it. It would mean the sidewalk would go closer to the right-of-way. The location of the sidewalks on the design plan is to be about three feet off the curb. So that long introduction I did, as chairman, we have the right to allow residents to speak. I told the residents of south Montclair that we would allow them to speak. We're gonna try to keep it brief. We're gonna try to keep all the personal attacks eliminated. If anybody wants to speak on this issue, just raise your hand and who have you called up there? Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Nielsen.
Paul, if you could step up to the microphone. Just identify yourself and where you live. At the podium.
Good evening. Paul Nielsen, 271 South Montclair. We understand that people like to walk down our streets, and a sidewalk would be a nice thing. I don't understand why we can't put a crush path on the west side of the street instead of wrecking our tree-lined street. The reason I moved to Wooddale from Chicago is I was tired of concrete, the concrete jungle. I really enjoyed the green. Every spring, it's a thrill to see it come up. If you wanna put a path in, wonderful. I'd love to walk my dog on it. Put it on the west side of the street. Don't chop down our trees. There's no reason whatsoever. Nobody's gonna walk on, nobody's gonna care which side they walk on. Thank you very much.
I agree.
If we can hold the applause till at the end of everybody speaks. In response to that, on the west side of the cross-street is a forest preserve property. I know Pat Gabor is working quite diligently, working with the president of the Forest Preserve District, Dewey Parati, and attempting to get permission. I personally talked to some of the staff, met with one staff member at the forest preserve who identified that the property over there is a Class 4 Woodlands, and that's the policy of their staff, that they wouldn't make a recommendation to install a path on that side. Where that, the roadway is, is actually, it's, our right-of-way goes right up to the border of the forest preserve property, so there's no really room on that side unless we got permission from the forest preserve. Anybody else who'd like to speak?
What would you say?
Go ahead.
Ricky Kamco, 277 South Montclair. The majority of the residents of south Montclair have expressed that we do not want sidewalks. The vote was 12 to 4. We have since picked up one more vote. The new people moving in on the corner also do not want sidewalks. Elimination of sidewalks will save the city 15,000 to 20,000, that is a city estimate from the city services. So you guys will save the cost of sidewalks. You'll also save the cost of repairing those sidewalks in the future. The majority of the people who walk down south Montclair walk on the forest preserve side. They're walking their dogs. We do not want them walking on our side to let their dogs eliminate in our front yards. They are expected to pick up the poop, but we're still gonna have them peeing on our grass and throughout our front yards, and with little kids having toys throwing through it, I don't want my kids having their balls or toys rolling through the dog stuff than picking it up and playing with it. The addition of concrete will add more stormwater runoff in an already saturated area. Right now, we do not have a problem on our side of the street with stormwater, but when you wind the road, you tear out the trees, you add more concrete, we could have future problems. The traffic on Montclair is primarily local and does not cause any problems in the past. I would like one of you to tell me how many people have been hit by a car on Montclair Road. How many children, how many dogs have been hit by a car? The sidewalks will cause destruction of landscaping, mature trees, and will change the character of our neighborhood. A lot of us move to Montclair because of the peaceful, relaxed atmosphere. If we wanted to live in the city with sidewalks, we would've chose a house on a street with sidewalks. We specifically chose our location for the relaxed atmosphere, and by putting in sidewalks, you guys are gonna change that. Sidewalks could bring strangers closer to our house. Right now, we know anybody that comes in our drive is somebody that we want there. If you're gonna have sidewalks close to the house, you're moving them closer to our children. Granted, I'm the only one on the street with little children at this point, but I don't want a pedophile walking two feet from my children. I'd rather have him 10 feet from my children out on the road. We've been advised that by our aldermen, that in other areas of Wooddale, you guys have eliminated sidewalks in the past, and we would like the same consideration for our street right now, at this point in time. We request that since Mr. Coles does live on our block, that when you guys do take a vote today, that he abstain from voting because it is a conflict of interest. So we request that he not be allowed to make a decision on a yes or no for sidewalks.
Agreed. Same.
We have two petitions here. We have one requesting yet again that we do not have sidewalks, and we have a second petition that we have signed, and we're submitting to the forest preserve, asking them to put a crushed stone path on the other side of the road, so that people wishing to walk their dogs do have a place to walk them off the road. But if you talk to Joe's wife, she's been walking dogs on her road for 30 years, and she's never had a problem. And they walk in dark blue in the middle of the night, and they've still never been run over. We're asking, who are these sidewalks being installed for? A lot of the people who walk down our road even ask us, why are you putting sidewalks there? The area's beautiful, they don't need sidewalks. So if you're not installing them for the current residents, and you're not installing them for the current people who are walking down the road, are you installing them for the future residents who don't live here? Why should my tax dollars as a current resident go towards somebody in the future who is gonna live here? You should use your tax dollars for your current residents, not for somebody you're hoping to bring in in the future. When a survey was conducted for a streetlight on Montclair Lane, the majority ruled, even though the person passing the petition round had minors of the household sign the petition, you guys still put up a streetlight. And so we're requesting that you guys use our taxpayer in a more friendly manner to the residents. This is a democracy, you should let the majority rule, and use the tax dollars towards something that the residents want, not paving our place with sidewalks and widening the streets and taking away all the green that we have moved into this area to enjoy.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask any future, we hold the applause, because again, this is, we have a lot of people here tonight, and we don't wanna be here all night, but if we limit our comments, again, because this is, it's not normal, but we're gonna allow you to speak, committee to two minutes to anybody else who wants to speak. Yes, sir.
Evening. My name is Deir Gould. I've been a 20-year resident at 311 Montclair in Wooddale, and...
Sir, sir?
Yes.
Please withhold your comments.
Okay. As a resident of Montclair, I do not want sidewalks. To me, the issue seems easy. The issue seems to be that if you are an elected official, clearly, the majority of the people do not want sidewalks. Therefore, I think it's your duty to make sure that people get what they want, and what they want is no sidewalks. It's just as simple in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll address one of the previous comments. In my opinion, I'm not the attorney for the city, but I see Michael Brisoni could probably give us a legal opinion for courtesy of the party, but I don't think there's any conflict of interest for Joe living on the street and being able to vote on the issue, but he, you know, that's up to him, but I don't think there's any conflict of interest, because he lives on the street, and he can't vote on it. Anybody else who'd like to comment? Yes, Ms. Gabor.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please withhold your comments, one speaker at a time.
That's my height. Pat Gabor, 305 Montclair. I think one of the other problems with the sidewalks is that you will be cutting off usable space on our driveways and causing people, when they do have company, to have more cars parked out on the street when they have guests, rather than being parked in their driveways. This should cause more of a hazard than, you know, what is occurring now. I understand that if you do have a sidewalk, you can't park on the sidewalk, so therefore, we would have to be parking at least 12 feet back from the curb, and that will eliminate a lot of the parking space. There are people in our neighborhood that have vehicles that will not be able to store, be stored in their garage, they have to be stored outside, and that's gonna cause a hardship for people as well. Many people are afraid that when you have a sidewalk, you're gonna pull out from your sidewalk and run over some little kid in a tyke bike or something coming down from two blocks down, and, you know, there's a lot of safety issues, I feel. The people that use our street and walk our street, walk their dogs along the forest preserve, and we don't see any change in that. When they, when they walk their dogs, I doubt that they're gonna walk them on the sidewalk. I just came down Montrose the other day, and there was a guy walking his dog by the woods. He wasn't walking on the sidewalk, and they provided sidewalks there. If people want sidewalks, you have sidewalks up and down Central. They have plenty of room to walk. They don't have to use Montclair for that reason. If our people don't want them, who are we putting them in for? Who are we spending the money, the money on? Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Pat Gray at 301 South Montclair. I've walked down Montclair in the dark, and there's been cars coming both ways, and I think it's unsafe without having sidewalks. I think sidewalks would also increase our property value. The pole at the end of Juniper and Montclair, the light pole, was hit twice by someone speeding down Montclair. I think that's very unsafe without sidewalks. Thank you.
No, we're gonna go over it through this one time for everybody. Thank you. With that, one of the things I did ask Gary about, and again, we're trying to be accommodating as possible, is, because I know one of the issues was the stormwater runoff, as well as how much green space we are taking. Our typical sidewalks that we install now are five feet wide, and one of the things we could do, ask Gary if we could maybe taper the sidewalk after the S curve on Montclair to taper it down to four feet. Is it a lot? No. Is it gonna make all the residents happy? No, I'm sure they'll still be upset if sidewalks pass, but I thought it would at least maybe taper it somewhat there, down by south Montclair, and also just trying to make it a little bit nicer down there, so. You sure? All in me.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, okay? I just sit here, and I just listen to what, you know, you folks said, and, you know, as much as, yes, you, you know, supposedly, this is a democracy, and yes, supposedly, you know, we're supposed to listen to what you have to say, what you have to understand is, we have to think about what's in the best interest of the whole city. You know, when you talk about my street, okay, that it's my street, and I don't want this on my street, well, you know, I have to ask the question, why is it your street? That street belongs to everybody in this community, and if we have sidewalks...
Sir, 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 you'll have to withhold your comments, sir.
The issue, though, is, we have a policy in place that we have been sticking with for the last several years, okay, regarding sidewalks. When we're doing curb and gutter, we're putting in sidewalks on the streets. We had a situation on Cedar in the fourth ward where I represent. We didn't put the sidewalks in. About a month ago, we had a kid get hit, okay? And it's because we didn't put the sidewalks in. And it's like, you know, if people say, well, you know, when was the last time, you know, somebody was hit on Montclair? Maybe never, but that doesn't mean it can't happen or it won't happen, okay? The point is, is that what we're trying to do here in the city is to improve everybody's, the value of everyone's home by, when we have the opportunity to go in and put in streets, curbs, and gutters, we are trying to put in sidewalks. We're in a situation we had in my ward two years ago when we did Itasca Street. All the residents were in here, just like you folks are today. Nobody wanted the sidewalks. Nobody wanted sidewalks. We put the sidewalks in, and you know what? And we heard some of the same comments. Well, I don't want people walking real close to my house. I don't want people looking in my windows. You know what? Nobody's gonna do that, okay? It don't happen. The people on Itasca Street, okay, are happy now with their sidewalks. They're glad they got the sidewalks, but they didn't want them. You know, I guess the point, what I'm trying to make here, is that we, as a council, we have a policy, and we have to follow what the policy is. And if we constantly deeter, okay, or go to the whims of a few, okay, even though it might be, in this case, and it is, the majority of one street, one block of two blocks, that, you know, we can't do that, because that's an exception.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the project for south Montclair with the installation of the sidewalks. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, if there's a majority that votes this down, I'll do a follow-up motion to eliminate the sidewalks on south Montclair. So the motion is to have the project installed as-is. We can make some of the deviations with Gary with respect to going around the trees on 261 as field corrections. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, I'll adjourn Public Works, and we'll go back to Finance Committee.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee of June 8th. Will the minute-taker please reflect the same members are present? First item, motion to approve the minutes of May 11, 2006.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item. It's a verbal report on water billing, usage, and discrepancies. And with that, I will, I'll hand this over to our interim finance director, Maggie Powers.
Thank you, Chairman Winger. Just a short update. We did notice some discrepancies in our water billing over the last four months. We were showing 84% billed as to, compared to what we purchased in terms of water. It appears that there are several problems with our reading devices. We're also checking out both the reading software and our billing software to see if accounts are being dropped unwittingly. I believe that we will, we will have a resolution to this problem within the next 60 days, but it took some time for us to get some additional software from the reading software people in order to make these comparisons, put everything into a spreadsheet, and see what's missing. Just wanted to make you aware of that. We'll be analyzing, Hitesh and I will be analyzing the water revenue for the year ending April 30th, 2006, in preparation for our annual audit, and hopefully, by then, we will have some answers. But I just wanted to give an informational item to the council.
Okay, thank you. And then, can we have that on the agenda?
It'll probably go in July.
Okay, great. Any questions, comments on that before we move to the next item? Next item is a verbal report on the banking services proposals. Ms. Powers?
Yes. Today, I finished putting the banking services proposal together, which will be sent out to four banking institutions, probably by the end of next week. The four institutions will be Itasca Bank and Trust Company, Suburban Bank and Trust Company, Chase Bank, and Charter One Bank. These are all banks who have worked with other municipalities, and part of the request for proposal is going to ask for a lot of detailed information from these banks about how many municipalities they serve, what sort of costs they charge for the services that they render. We certainly wanted to consider some local institutions, but we also wanted to take it out to the marketplace. One of the new things that we'll be asking the banks to quote us on is handling of credit cards, particularly Visa and MasterCard in the city hall. Right now, we can't handle credit card transactions, and we do have occasional requests from people to pay their water bills, pay for a building permit, certainly pay for vehicle stickers at this time of year, and we haven't had that capability, so that's a very important part of the services we'll be asking the banks to provide. We've also done some research on a new, a new feature that the Illinois Funds, which is the State of Illinois Treasurers Pool is offering, called ePay. ePay essentially allows people to go to our website, find the ePay button, click on it, and link automatically to the Illinois Funds. That would allow people to use Visa, MasterCard, American Express, and Discover Card, and there would be a transaction fee that the individual would pay. It doesn't cost the city anything, the individual would pay a transaction fee. You may know right now that many counties allow people to pay their property taxes this way, and the fee is nominal. I think, I think if someone were paying $150,000, the fee would be something like $170,000. But if you're paying a bill up to $50,000, the fee is like a dollar or a dollar and a half, so it's not, it's not an onerous fee at all. But this would allow us to, to offer as many payment options as people wanted. That is fairly easy to implement. We wouldn't wanna implement it, however, until we had made the decision about our banking services, so everything can be run smoothly. And the ultimate goal here of the banking services is to stop some of the transactions you see in the Treasurers Report, where we have to move money around for different funds to keep everything in balance. We do use commingled funds, and that's appropriate for governments. However, we have one too many receiving banks right now, and we have, we have too many, too many accounts set up in too many different places. It's much harder to keep the money where it belongs. It also makes it much easier for us to invest if we deal with one main banking institution, so that's the goal of the request for proposals.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay. That item is for, is a report for information only. Next item, Treasurers Report, and it was a perfect lead-in discussing the report. I had reviewed it as well, and had all my questions answered and discussed with Maggie Powers, and there was a perfect summary on it. Did you wish to add anything about the report?
No, other than to call your attention to the fact that we have $23.9 million in total, but of that, seven, about 8.2 million is special service area money, so that's not available to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
It would be helpful to me. Could we add another column showing the interest rates that these are bearing in the various institutions?
Certainly.
And then, as, when I was reading this, I was reminded of something Alderman Semeca said to me years ago. Do we sweep the money out over the weekends into higher interest-bearing accounts?
Actually, we're getting so much interest from the Illinois Funds, and that's where we've got a lot of our funds right now. Their rate today, I believe, was 4.903%, so they're, they're higher than the CDs. But, but of course, the goal would be, and part of my banking proposal says that, we want all the accounts swept, and we could do repurchase agreements over the weekend, which is a good way to bump up some of the interest rates. Keep in mind, however, that our investment policy requires that all city funds be collateralized at 110%, so the banks that we, we want to propose are banks that can handle that, who have those kinds of securities to pledge in the city's name. That's very important. The Treasurers Pool is not collateralized, however, because it's the Treasurers Pool, fits into category, I think it's category three, as far as the characterization of funds, and it's considered quite safe by all the municipalities and counties that use it.
Thank you. Alderman Tolemy?
Maggie, have you considered one of the, when they were talking about, you know, sweep accounts over the weekend, when you're talking with these banks signing up for the RFPs, see if they will sweep our funds into Fed Funds overnight, Fed Funds?
That's what we were talking about with the repurchase agreements. That's how it would work.
Okay. Because, I could tell you, Fed Funds rate right now is, is higher than 4.90, and over, over three days, it's...
And what will happen is...
Be a good return.
We're asking the banks to come, to look at our architecture of what, what kind of transactions and activity we have, and come back to us with their proposal on how best to maximize handling all the cash. But, but the key here is to use one institution...
Right.
...for our daily cash needs, and that will, once we simplify that, things will get better in a hurry.
Alderman Suback?
I thank the mayor for giving credit for that one, but I didn't come up with that. That's way too above my head, but thank you anyways, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, then, that takes care of that agenda item, and then with the request to add the interest rates and, and future reports. And next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, audit update for August 2006. Item B, final budget amendments for fiscal year 2005-06. Are there any other items for, for future meetings that we'd like to add? Then I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, and Billing Committee to order. Let the minutes reflect that same members are still present. Next item is approval of minutes of May 11, 2006 from...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the report and recommendation, case number 06V4, Novoah 121, South Cedar. Side yard setback variations. The petition's request variants reduce both the north and south side yard setbacks to allow construction and use of the second floor... to allow construction and use of the second floor addition. I see that the petitioner's attorney is here, sir, if you would like to give us...
Yes, at this time, I'd ask that we hand you out a package that we created. There are a couple of changes that were made, and we will be showing those on the overhead board. Warren, why don't you go over to the overhead?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee. Ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Thomas Breen. I come before you this evening on behalf of my client, Mr. Ramon Novoa and his wife, Esther, who are the owners of the property commonly known as 121 South Cedar, Wooddale, Illinois. Property in question contains lot dimensions of 75 by 152 and contain approximately 11,412 square feet. The property is zoned R3 and is surrounded by R3 zoning. With me this evening is my client and our builder, Mr. Garon Ilijevski, it's spelled We come before you requesting a variation from your required side yard setback requirement of 7.5 feet, and we're asking that it be reduced to 5.27 on the north and 5.6 on the This is to allow my client to construct a second floor addition.